Item tonight is the pledge to our flag. Councilmember Markhart, would you read us in the pledge?
Yes, I would.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Markhart. For the record, this evening, we have six councilmembers here. Councilmember Poyer is in some place that we don't like to be tonight. So he is excused. First item on tonight's agenda are the consent items, which includes the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from the previous meetings.
May I make a motion to approve the agenda and the vouchers and minutes from the previous meetings?
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Bailey, to approve this evening's consent items, including this evening's agenda, the vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meetings. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight are citizen comments. If any member of the audience would like to address the council on an item that's either on tonight's agenda or something just totally different, we'd give you three minutes. Ask that you come up, give your name and address for the record. Extra credit for students. I don't see any takers. So we move on to our presentations. We have four presentations this evening before we get to action items. The first is regarding School Choice Week. Who's got that proclamation?
I do, Your Honor.
Councilmember Harold, would you read that to the record, please?
Whereas all children in City of Wenatchee should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas City of Wenatchee recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the City of Wenatchee to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the City of Wenatchee, and whereas City of Wenatchee is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas City of Wenatchee has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, I, Frank Kuntz, do hereby recognize January 21st to 27th, 2018, as City of Wenatchee's School Choice Week, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens and witness whereof I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 11th day of January 2018, Frank J. Kuntz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. I don't believe anyone's here to grab that, so we'll make sure it gets to the right spot. Next item is a privilege to present an AWC certificate of advanced leadership to Councilmember Jim Bailey. Do we have the, is there a, oh, Anna's got it. Look at that. So for those of you that don't know, the city councilmembers who choose to can take educational classes through the Association of Washington Cities and make them more smart about municipal government. And then apparently, there's an advanced leadership class. I didn't even know you could even go above that. But Councilmember Bailey, who represents us on many statewide boards and parts of the Association of Washington Cities, has been an exemplary councilmember and representative as well. And so I am thrilled that you've got an advanced leadership certificate. So, I don't even see all the paperwork in here, but, oh my goodness. There it is. AWC Certificate of Municipal Leadership. Councilmember Jim Bailey, City of Wenatchee, for the successful completion of AWC's Advanced Certificate of Municipal Leadership Training Program. So Jim, thank you for representing the city. Congratulations.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, just wanted to say, I think, work, you have it, correct?
Yes. Yeah, and so you, that was quite a ways back, but it's a good opportunity to be able to engage in municipal government at a level beyond just your local community. It gives you a good chance to see a lot of different things in action in other parts of the state. And one of the things that's always been, I guess, illuminating to me is how fortunate I am to be in a community like this and to work with the staff and council that I have here over the last 10 years. When I look at some of the problems and things that other communities face and have to work through and sometimes just become completely dysfunctional, it's a joy to be able to be in this community and to serve you, the citizens of this city. So, thank you very much.
Renee, your timing was absolutely perfect. Yeah, come on up. Allison?
We have Carrie here with us tonight. Carrie, the Diversity Council.
Uh-oh, microphone.
So do you want to say just congratulations?
Congratulations, Renee. We're going to miss you. And thank you for all your service and all the funniness, everything that you've done. You've been a great mentor, and I know I'm going to see you around, but you mean a lot to us, and you're just so special. So, thank you for all the years of service.
So Renee is one of our longest-standing members of the Diversity Council, and she has stepped down. She is retiring from Together, and so we wanted to honor her with a plaque.
Come on up. I need my picture taken.
This is just a wonderful surprise. I had no idea. Oh, my gosh.
You changed the whole agenda.
Wow. No, thank you, and I am retiring. I'm about next fall. So, yeah, this is a nice surprise, and what? Yeah, yeah, and, yeah, after 27 years, I'm ready for a new adventure. So, it'll be fun. So, thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate this.
And then finally, our last presentation is, obviously, we're going through our process for the Civil Rights and Social Justice Awards, and there's a big event on Saturday. So we are going to announce the nominees. So Allison, Anna, who's all doing this?
Carrie and Ashley.
Okay. Took the microphone. I shouldn't have.
Thank you. Sorry.
Can we talk to them instead of you?
Thank you. All right. So each year, the Diversity Advisory Council honors individuals, groups, or organizations for their civil and social contributions to our community. Nominations are accepted by the City of Wenatchee's Diversity Council, and honorees are announced and presented with the award at the annual Martin Luther King Jr. Multicultural Festival in January each year. The award recognizes an individual, group, or organization in the Wenatchee Valley that is making significant contributions to the work of protecting civil rights and/or promoting social justice. Nominees must meet the following criteria. They must reside and or conduct business in the greater Wenatchee area. The nominee's civil rights and social justice work has had a significant impact on the lives of a specific population or populations within the greater Wenatchee area, including, but not limited to, children and families, migrant workers, the homeless, mental health, or other underserved or disadvantaged groups or classes in our region. Civil rights and social justice work has substantially increased public awareness and/or led to change in public, city, or county policy on issues that affect those not equally served or represented in our communities. Though professional work may be considered as part of the award process, a commitment to civil rights and social justice work by the nominee must be demonstrated. Nominees are evaluated in several aspects regarding their work, passion and commitment to this community, the overall impact they have made, how their attitude, public opinion impact their work, their life experiences, and how all these influence civil rights and social justice, embodying Martin Luther King's mark on the world. So when your name is called, if you could please come up, accept your certificate, and take a picture with the mayor, and then stay up here, and then we'll do a group photo at the end. So for individual category, we have Marcia Marcy Ruth Ostrom. Marcia is the head of the Department of Environmental Studies at the WSU Tree Research Center. Her academic experience include decrees from Harvard, Cornell, and University of Wisconsin PhD. She's an advocate for farmers. She is presently on the board of the Leavenworth Farmers Market. She especially enjoys working with underrepresented parts of our community. Several people are out because of the weather. So we will get her her certificate, and hopefully she'll be able to attend on Saturday. So, thank you. We have Jessie Cohen. Jessie Cohen works at Confluence Health and has participated in Night in a Box for three to four years along with her daughter. She has brought a face to the struggle of homelessness. She is able to convey the small things we can do that will make a large impact for someone in the situation. As a member of JSL, she directs the collection and distribution of toiletries, organizes the 2017 diaper drive, assists with the coats for kids, and so much more. And then I have Terry Valdez.
Are you sure?
Yay!
I only live three minutes away, so I have no excuse.
Terry Valdez was raised in South Wenatchee and was an art educator for many years with the Eastmont School District. Terry has taken on a community stewardship role for work in South Wenatchee and is leading, guiding fantastic work year after year. Terry was instrumental in the highly successful I Imagine South Wenatchee visioning that occurred in 2012, and Terry is making a difference through his ability to honor people and their neighborhood. Terry's work and engagement efforts have built confidence amongst South Wenatchee residents. Thank you.
I'm still going to do like a full photo with all of them. Okay, sweet. So the next category we have is the nonprofit and organization category. And so the first organization we'd like to recognize is the YWCA of North Central Washington. Shavana and Jenny, you want to come up? The YWCA makes an impact on civil rights and social justice, providing services to those in need. They embody their mission statement, which is dedicating their energy to eliminating racism, empowering women, and promoting peace, justice, freedom, and dignity for all. In 2015, the YWCA began its annual Stand Against Racism Awareness Event, which continues to grow annually, including expanding to an event in Omak last year, and we just really appreciate the work that you do. Next up is Columbia Valley Community Health. Come on up. The mission of Columbia Valley Community Health is to provide access to improved health and wellness with compassion and respect for all. In 2016, CVCH served 26,000 patients, 56% of whom were Hispanic or Latino, and also provided healthcare to 532 homeless individuals. Thank you so much for the work that you do.
Awesome. Thank you.
To say the nomination packets were really extensive, and we only have time to share a snippet of what these folks have done, and so come on Saturday and hear more about what they are doing in our community. It's really incredible. Up next, Numerica PAC. Thank you for being here. Numerica's PAC, every kid at the PAC program is creating opportunities for students throughout the Wenatchee Valley and the region to experience the arts at either the PAC or in a program delivered to their school. The PAC brings world-class performances to expose kids to creativity, joy, and culture. And the next PAC program is actually tomorrow. The mountaintop. So, love to see many of you there. And the Trust for Public Land. As an organization, the Trust for Public Land works in places where lack of access to the benefits of nature contributes to the broader disparities, for example, in the economic or physical health of the community. They have engaged residents and stakeholders in South Wenatchee in, turning my page, the process of renovating the Quanis Metau Park, and have prior, we have priority as the involvement and empowerment of those who will, who face many barriers to participation. They strive to ensure that their work serves the entire community, and thank you for the work that you do.
So the nominee for our business category, the Wenatchee World. Rufus did stop by and say hello, but he had to leave, so hopefully we'll see him on Saturday. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up, Pete. I'm already embarrassed. Come on up. Rufus Woods has led an effort through his Art of Community column to highlight those individuals, businesses, and organizations in our community that are working across barriers to bring people together to effect change. This has led to the development of this civil program to be carried out by the Diversity Council and the Wenatchee World. The Art of Community column has highlighted those who are working to bring us together and celebrate them, and about celebrating the dignity of people that can be enhanced by building the broader perspectives of our community.
And our youth category, and so we're really excited about this. First, we'd like to recognize McKenna Schwab. McKenna, please applaud. McKenna is the founder of the Max Spire Foundation. She is clearly making an impact on the lives of children with serious medical conditions so that they can better enjoy their childhood. She's been a caring leader through all of the projects she has started and has had an impact on bettering the care of patients at Children's Hospital. Thank you so much for the work that you do. Next, we'd like to recognize Freddie Hamm. Freddie is the president of the Associated Students of Wenatchee Valley College. She was dropped in from Haiti as a child and grew up in Afrika. Freddie has been a part of the Student Senate for three years. She's assisted students' colors of conference two times and has worked on projects such as the Unite Campaign to promote acceptance and inclusion at Wenatchee Valley College, and is spearheading Pride Week this year. And currently, just a little plug, because I know she's working really hard on it, she's in the process of planning an event on February 8th that's open to the public, which will highlight one of our alumni from WVC, who is Olympic skier and has an absolutely wonderful and very inclusive message. So thank you for the work that you do, Freddie. That event is free and includes a taco bar. And it's in the beautiful rec center, so if you haven't come out to see it yet, it's definitely something else. Up next, it's Luce Estrada. Luce identifies as Latinx and is the president of the Queer Straight Alliance at Wenatchee Valley College. Luce is a strong advocate for the LGBTQIA rights and provides a very welcoming, I'm in the community and I struggle, welcoming environment in the QSA club at WVC. She's also been a part of the Diversity Council in the past and truly believes to giving back to her community through social justice advocacy. Thank you, Luce. So that concludes our, all of our nominees. We'd love to somehow bring you together in the front to get a group photo. In front of the U. Well, they are organizing themselves. We would really love it if you would all please join us on Saturday at the museum as we, together with the mayor, will announce and recognize the winner. That will be a part of the Martin Luther King Jr. Festival.
Ready? Smile. Three, two, one. Second take, three, two, one. And one more. Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So we will see you all Saturday at 10:00, correct?
Yes.
All right, we'll let the room clear out. Probably a few folks aren't interested in our, our action items.
Yeah, that's quite a, quite a group this year. This is the first time we've done the youth category. I don't remember doing a youth category.
McKenna was a finalist last year and didn't get it. Yeah.
I thought maybe she fit in a different category last year or something.
All right, Matt, you want to close the doors for us, and we'll...
Mark out there still.
All right, action items this evening. The first item we have is appointment of a mayor pro tem for 2018. I don't know, we've been kind of doing sort of turnsies. I don't know where we're at on the turnsies routine. Is it Ruth Stern?
I think it's Ruth Stern. It's either Ruth or Mike, and Mike's not here to defend himself.
I think, I think I agree. I think it might be Ruth Stern.
I think it is Ruth Stern. In fact, I'm pretty sure it is.
I would entertain a motion then, if we had one.
Your Honor, I would move that we appoint...
Resolution 2018-02.
Oh, excuse me. Do I have that in my...
Age six of 90.
Oh, okay. Okay. I would move that we adopt Resolution Number 2018-02, appointing the mayor pro tem for 2018, and that would be Ruth.
Second. All right, we got a motion by Councilmember Bailey, a second by Councilmember Kulas to appoint Ruth Esparza as the mayor pro tem for the 2018 year. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Ruth.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is regarding an amendment to the Shalane County PUD Service Agreement. Chief Crown.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Unfortunately, this small amendment accounts for about 40 pages of your overall packet.
Thank you for the history.
I'm sorry for that. Killing trees.
It was just nice to see that nothing had really changed except a few dollar amounts.
Yes.
Nice to see the history.
Yep. The amendment is really simple. It's essentially making reference to the changes in state statute regarding the left retirement system and the, how it affects the overtime rate for charging third parties. So, the adjustment to the overtime rate is reflected in all those service contracts. The service contracts range from activity being parking enforcement up to large events where we're providing security with our officers. So, that is what's before you. It's overtime rate change for all those service contracts. Happy to answer any questions?
The agreement seems to be working out well for the PUD and for us.
Yeah, I think in 2015, there was a change with the security director out there, so I think as far as events are concerned, we have not been asked to do much service for them. We are hoping that this year, without smoke, we will have a lot more people visiting Wenatchee, and some of those larger weekends, they will be making some requests of our services, so, yes.
Everything seems to be going well with the patrols on the, along the bike paths and all those kind of things guys working. They still using the bikes, I assume.
Yeah, this year, in the last two years, we've been down with our manning from a mixture of points, one of them being just simply we can't get enough people hired quickly, and the other piece being we have some injuries that occurred over the last two summers. So we haven't had really the ability to put anybody out there on the bicycles. We're looking at possibility of full staffing as early as the spring, at least dedicated for hiring, but probably won't have the majority of those folks ready to go until June. But yes, we will put people on bikes, and they will be patrolling that area.
That's always been, I've always believed that that's been a really, really positive thing to have that, just that presence. It makes a, makes a difference.
Absolutely.
All right, any questions for chief? If not, I entertain a motion.
May I make a motion for the city council to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on Amendment Number Nine to the Service Agreement, SA Number 10-182, between the City of Wenatchee and Public Utility District Number One of Shalane County.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Markhart, to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on Agreement Number Nine with the Wenatchee, with the Public Utility District Number One of Shalane County. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, chief. Carrie Page.
Yeah, I'm still working on them.
Wages update and salaries for next year.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council.
It'll take me a while to funnel through all of Chief Crown's papers to get to those.
Once you get through all those 40, 40 or so pages. So while you're searching for that, I am here regarding ordinance number 2018-01, and this establishes the pay ranges for our temporary employees for the City of Wenatchee. And in Exhibit A in your package, you'll find our guidelines, and then Exhibit B, you'll find the positions that we hire temporary employees for. I do have one minor change to notify you. I've had a request from our Public Works Director to name maintenance worker. We had previously, I don't know if it made it into your package, but we had previously stated separation between parks and streets, but we're going to keep it generic so that he has the opportunity to bring a maintenance worker on for facilities if that's necessary or other departments. And then I also want to note, as all of you I'm sure already know, the minimum wage for Washington State went up 50 cents, and so that's the primary reason for the change.
All right. Any questions for Carrie? If not, I'd entertain a motion regarding ordinance 2018-01.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance Number 2018-01, which establishes pay ranges for temporary employees for the calendar year 2018, and repeals ordinance Number 2016-39.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Esparza, to adopt ordinance 2018-01 establishing pay ranges for our temporary employees. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second one, Carrie?
Yes, so regarding ordinance Number 2018-02, this one establishes the administrative and management group pay ranges for 2018. You'll see under Exhibit A, the salaries for 2018, and this does include what was budgeted. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So this mostly just has the 2.5% cost of living increase built into the...
2.15%, yes.
Whatever it was.
Yeah, no worries.
2.15%.
Yep. And then there are, if you'll recall, there is a new position. GIS Coordinator was the title, the new title, same pay range as GIS Manager. We reclassified the Engineering Services Manager from Assistant City Engineer.
And all of these are basically in the budget with these, with these amounts, so there's no changes in terms of what we've got in the budget for what the salaries are.
Correct.
Have we, you know, last year we, or you and the Finance Committee did some major kind of readjusting...
Yeah, I'd say...
...kind of things. Is that, did we do some more of that this year?
Little bit of minor adjustments, yeah. The group that includes a Community Economic Development Director down through the police captain has another person in that group, and then the group below that has added a few as well. So we have grouped a couple in a couple of different spots to get a little closer to what our comparables look like. But really, very little of it. And I think for the most part, and Allison, you might, you know, over the last, when I first became mayor, we were kind of out of whack on a bunch of them, and I think we've got them mostly back in order. Carrie does look annually at to see where we're at with job descriptions in our comparable cities. We generally don't make changes unless we're over 5%.
Correct.
So I think we tend to look at that during the budget cycle and see kind of where things, where things sit.
And as a general rule, anytime a position comes open, there's always a comparable analysis done at that time, and I typically prefer to have a rotation of once every two years, you go through and look at a... years, you go through and look at a group and make sure that you're staying comparable, and currently we are competitive.
So if there's any other questions, I entertain a motion regarding the Ordinance
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2018-02, which establishes position for regular status employment within the ma, no, I beg your pardon, 01, which establishes pay ranges for temporary employees.
We are in two.
Yeah, we're on two.
Okay.
You had the right one.
I was right one. Status employment within the management and administrative group and fixes compensation to be paid for calendar year 2018 per Exhibit A. Management and Administration Group, late schedule. This ordinance repeals Ordinance Number 2017-10.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Markhart, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt Ordinance 2018-02, which establishes pay for the management and administrative group for 2018. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Carrie. Next up is interlocal agreement between the county and the city and the city and the city regarding solid waste. Allison.
Good evening, Nelson Williams, Executive Services Director. You approved the updated interlocal agreement with Shalane County for the provision of solid waste services, but they changed the item in regard to the budget allocation that was in there. And they made a request that we provide for that amendment to the agreement with them, and they requested that in November. After discussing that with Keith, he's on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, he said the advisory board approves the budget every year, so the removal of that $125,000 amount from the agreement as a cap was not a concern in that we had representation there. So this amendment would just remove that budget number and just provide essentially the same language in the division according to the percentages for each entity that's involved in the solid waste program. So we would ask for your approval, and any questions? Keith could weigh in.
Basically, the, the change was so that they didn't have to approve the whole document every year if there was a change. It just refers to the percentage, and so therefore, when the percentage changes, then they don't have to go back and do the whole agreement over again.
And so if there's increases, obviously, those get applied to all of them prorata. So we have our share of discussion with them, and it affects all the other cities in the same proportional manner. So we're on top of that.
Since we're represented there, I felt it was an okay thing to do since we're always going to be a representative there and have a voice.
Your Honor, I will make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the interlocal agreement between Shalane County, the city of Kachmera, the city of Shalane, the city of Enniet, the city of Leavenworth, and the city of Wenatchee for the countywide solid and hazardous waste program.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Esparza, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to authorize the mayor's signature on the interlocal agreement between the county and some cities regarding solid, solid waste program. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can you leave? Hi, Matt.
This is a popular one, I can see already.
We had our fun, we had our fun with Matt today at the Finance Committee when he asked for this, so.
So our rooftop HVAC unit for the police station is nearing the end of its life, and we're starting to have some issues with it. It was installed in 2004 when the building was constructed. Typical life of those units is 15 years. So we're a couple of years early on the replacement of that, but with the critical nature of that facility, with our 911 center, as well as the police department in there, we don't want that going down. So the, the Rivercom server rooms is controlled by a, they have an HVAC unit that cools that room, but this is backup for that if it ever fails. So we want to make sure it's reliable. So we've, we hired a consultant, McKinstry, to look at solutions to fixing the, that this issue, and this came up with replacing the HVAC units in kind at the same location. We've had some issues with the design of the building, with where the units were placed, with that area not dissipating heat very well. And so we're going to make some modifications to the structure, add some vents so air can flow through the, the units to cool themselves. Right now, we've been having to put water on them during, they're pretty much all summer long, which causes other maintenance issues and not good for the, the long-term life of these. So we've made some recent improvements to the HVAC system. We updated the controls. We got an energy grant from the Department of Commerce to help cover some of that cost. That's saving a lot of energy, natural gas and electricity. So we were kind of overtaxing these units for most of their life, where they were having to reheat, so we were overcooling and reheating certain spaces. So we got that problem fixed. So now we just need to replace the, the units. So kind of here to ask for, so there's, we have an agreement with Rivercom, so they pay 20.7% of the, of the cost. Into my agenda report, my project budget, the sales tax number isn't included for the city and Rivercom portion, so those numbers are actually higher, but the total is, is correct. So we, if this is approved, we would get a contract signed, amendment to the existing contract assigned with McKinstry, and they'd get the materials ordered, and we'd expect in April, end of April, early May, construction timeline. It's kind of a key because it's going to be, we're going to have the building shut down. The HVAC units are going to be shut down for about four days is what we're anticipating. So we want to do that before the heat of the summer. So we're going to, so that, we won't have a backup for the, the servers when this unit's off, offline. So we have a contingency plan to, if, we'll have HVAC technicians there, so if it goes down, kind of all hands on deck on getting the other unit back up. And it's April, so we might have a little bit more time to get it back up than if it was in July or August. So this, yeah, this, there's really, you know, it's just replacing the existing units and, but it's, it's definitely expensive.
So Matt, just a clarification, because they were looking at purchasing a backup system for the server room. This would, McKinstry is confident that this would be big enough that they would not have to purchase that other backup system for the server room, so that they have the primary for the server room, and the main building would then become the backup.
Yeah, they're ensuring that it meets that. It's the same 90-ton unit that they're proposing, but with all the reheat that was happening and the...
It's the same 90-ton, because Rivercom is, the oppression is larger.
Yeah, so the existing was a 90-ton, and this was going to be a 90-ton. And they ran all their, their calculations, and this is what they need for that building. The existing building, it was designed with a 75-ton, but they actually installed a 90. But with all the reheat that was happening in that outside area not cooling, and this unit would be designed to work at a higher ambient air temperature.
Okay.
They've ensured us that this will be a reliable backup for the server room.
You need to clarify that information with Rivercom then, because they're in the oppression that it's a 125 unit rather than a 90.
Okay, yeah, this, this proposal is for a 90. Going higher, it just, everything else costs more. Our transformers for electric causes a whole bunch more issues, so.
Including the backup generator they're looking at?
Yeah, they, they're looking at, our backup generator, we, during this, we found that the as-built drawings were not accurate for the building, so they had to, we went and field verified every component, and turns out that there's really no problem, and our backup generator's adequately sized. And Rivercom is wanting to put some more stuff on a, on the backup generator, which McKinstry said was okay, or the electrical consultant.
Okay.
We...
I think it's time for a good clarification, because they're thinking generator needs, still needs to be changed, and that they were getting 125-ton unit.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to them.
Thanks.
Matt, when you said, you know, you're replacing, or you, refresh my memory here, but it seems like we had the conversation at this unit as it was beginning to start declining. One of the issues was that it, the way it, way it operated, it was, I can't remember whether it heated air and then cooled it, or cooled air and then heated it, which didn't make a whole lot of sense. Is this, is this going to be basically doing the same thing, or is it going, is this a different kind of?
So we just fixed that problem with the controls, when we did that controls project. So now we're no longer...
That took care of that problem.
We're no longer reheating air in the building. So that's how we were able to achieve all the energy savings, to make a competitive commerce grant. So that problem's taken care of. So this, these units should function a lot better, and especially with the, with the changes to the building, with adding vents, and the, these, these units should function for their 15-year life.
Mm-hmm. Good.
In a perfect world.
All right, any other questions for Matt? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for City Council to authorize finalization and signature of amendment to the Energy Services Performance-Based Contract for Energy Upgrades at the Wenatchee Police Station.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to authorize the finalization and the mayor's signature on amendments to the contract from McKinstry to do some more work at the police station. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Public hearing, we have one public hearing tonight regarding the Ome Garden Road vacation. So for public hearings, we'll hear from staff. The council will ask staff questions, and we'll turn it over to the council, or excuse me, to the public for any testimony, and then back over to the council for any action they may have. So City Engineer, Gary Owen, how are you tonight?
Very well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is, you probably all remember it. I'll give you a quick recap. Last year, we were approached by Shalane County Public Works. They have a big yard out in Old Station. It all drained toward Ome Garden Road. Fortunately for us, they decided they wanted to try and take care of their stormwater problem, which discharged onto what used to be their road, but we just took over in 2015 when we annexed the Old Station area. And we were more than happy to initiate and recommend initiating this vacation for them, as this work will basically retain a lot of stormwater out there and keep it from getting out into the public system and neighboring private properties. So we went ahead and initiated the vacation, and then we kicked this hearing forward a couple of times after it was discovered there was a PUD water line in that old area that wasn't recognized when they did their design work, and the PUD didn't even know about it at the time. So they finally worked out their differences in what they're going to do. They're going to basically abandon that old water line and relocate a water hy, or a, the, one fire hydrant that's out there in their yard. So both entities are more than happy if we go forward at this point with formalizing this ordinance and vacating this section of Ome Garden Road, which is what I'm here to recommend we do tonight.
All right, any questions for Gary while we have him?
I have one. I'm assuming that, is it safe to assume that although the city had, with the road, street vaca, right-of-way vacation, we have the ability to seek compensation for the value of that, we're really considering the public interest and the public benefit of taking care of the stormwater to be an overriding...
That's the way staff looked at it.
...concern, as opposed to gaining compensation for...
And we don't really...
Plus it wasn't our street to start with.
And we don't have a policy for how we make those decisions.
Well, we kind of do here, but, yeah.
And are we requiring the stormwater to be built, or is it just a handshake with the county that they're going to build the stormwater? Or is part of this vacation have a requirement that it gets built?
We, we, it's a handshake. We don't have a requirement. I've seen their plans already. I have no reason to doubt that they're not going forward with their, their project for their own stormwater utility, which benefits our stormwater utility now.
Yeah. All right, any questions for the City Engineer? All right, anybody from the members of the audience wish to address the council on this public hearing item? See no takers. I will turn it over to the council for any action they may want to take. So is there a motion? I don't even see it.
I don't even see a motion on here.
Is there a motion to make, make one up here?
I apologize, I didn't write a motion for it.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adopt Ordinance Number 2018-03, vacating a portion of the city right-of-way along Ome Garden Road in the city of Wenatchee.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kulas, a second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt Resolution 2018-03, vacating a part of the city roadway to Shalane County in the Old Station area. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Gary. Mayor's Report. So I was in Olympia on Tuesday, went to the governor's State of the State address, did spend a few moments with the governor. The Wenatchee Jazz Choir sang the National Anthem. So at the State of the State address, and they were, of course, incredible. Did meet with the governor for a few moments, and then stayed and met with his executive staff for a few moments. Drew Schurk is in Old Wenatchee High School, graduated a year older than I am, and has worked his way up through the Department of Revenue, and now he's the governor's Director of Legislative Affairs. So he is, has, doesn't have the hair he had in high school, but none of us really do. So anyhow, just had a social greeting with Drew and then came on back. So we are working hard on the infra grant. We are going on the 29th, the 30th, and 31st of January. I found out today, the 30th is really the President's State of the Union address.
Yes.
So we'll try to keep Allison from running through the Capitol screaming. The group that's, the group that's going is Allison and myself, and J.C. Baldwin from the Port, Kyle Steinberg from Douglas County, Ben Fabian representing Stamilt, and then our consultant, Jeanne Beckett. So we'll be gone for those three days. We've got scheduled with Senator Cantwell, Senator Murray, Riker, Newhouse, working our way through all of that. So I think for the most part, that's all going pretty well. Allison, other stuff in the last month? You probably have a list.
We, we do, we'll just hand out the committee assignments, because at our next council meeting, if anybody's changing committee assignment, we just will bring that resolution forward at the next meeting. And then our directors' meetings, we're changing to the fourth Thursday of the month.
Okay.
At 1:00. The directors' meeting, which you, a number of you have attended.
Okay.
And public safety will be next Thursday.
Next Thurs...
Thursday to 18th.
So is there any, is anyone, we've obviously got the Finance Committee. We met today. It's the same committee as last time. We've got Public Works. Keith, are you on any of them at this point? I know with your...
With Fin, no, I'm not on Finance.
Do you want to be on one of those two, or is your scheduling making...
It's going to be really tough the next three months, so I would, I would say, I would prefer to stay where I'm at.
Okay. Anybody else want to switch? Otherwise, we'll leave Finance and Public Works and Public Safety the same.
Mike, four years, okay?
Yeah, he's fine. Yeah. He's in Hawaii, for God's sakes. Any other switches from your other council spots? Okay. Just go ahead and prepare an ordinance on a, and for just adopting it with all the current stuff the way it is. And then next week, at our work session, we will hear from all the department heads about their work product for 2018. I'll try to give them as brief as possible to just get you updated on. I think it's from the Public Works Committee. They have a really good idea of what Public Works is going to be doing next year, but maybe the Finance Committee doesn't. The Finance Committee's got a pretty good idea. So I think just get them all in, and they'll kind of crank through their work product for next year. I get us all up to speed on, on what that might look like.
Your Honor, I will be in Mexico next week.
So you'll call in then? Oh, you're not going to call in either? All right.
I don't know, let me think about it.
I'm joking. Ruth tries to do that, and it doesn't really work very well, so enjoy your time in Mexico.
Allison, our, yeah, Public Works next, or Public Safety next week, 3:30, same, same time.
Anything else, council members, from the last month? Anything else, councilmembers, from the last month or so while you've been, we haven't been meeting and?
I have been in communications with a city in Mexico, our potential sister city, and tentatively, I'm planning a trip down, hopefully to actually, you know, like, sign stipulations or have a ceremony for a sister city with Placa Paque.
Oh, good.
Yay.
And as soon as I get the stipulations, they're drafting up stipulations over there. Apparently, they, they have to do it by federal law.
Okay.
And so, they will send me a draft. I'll probably sit down with you, Frank, and talk about these stipulations, maybe do some editing, adding, and then we'll present it to council.
Okay.
And also, I would like another council member to go. I know last time, Mike Poyer did that. If anyone's interested, let me know.
I recommend that you all travel to Mexico with Ruth.
What was that little smirk about?
And we are, we are
We'll talk after the meeting, okay?
And we do have a lot of stuff, a lot of asks to our delegation in Olympia. So, if any of you are ever traveling over there, talk with Allison and Steve and myself. We've got a request for some NEPA money to start on the environmental for Confluence Parkway. We've got to ask for our Rally Our Future from the governor's office to help keep the funding for that going. Housing, we have a housing legislation that's, you know, kind of the same one from last time. There's other housing legislation kind of being presented. So, I, we have a bit of a, more of a presence over there this year than maybe in the last couple, so we're monitoring all that stuff fairly closely. I think the construction on the hotel is ongoing, although the winters had a bit of a tough time with that. I don't know if any of you watched CNBC today. I did not, but they were in town, went live from Salsita Connection to talk about Bitcoin and cheap power and blockchain technology. So, I think I've got that recorded to go watch some of it. But, you can go online and do the CNBC Wenatchee, and you can see a little seven-minute video that was on pretty early this morning, so. Seems like there's just a lot happening with the Wenatchee kind of focus, it seems like, over the last
There is.
Little bit.
There's a tremendous amount going on. It's gonna be a great year for tourism, too. The Convention Center is entering the year pre-sold at a much higher level than it ever has before, so I'm excited about that. It should do very well, and just, I'm hearing lots of great talk about our community over there.
Yeah.
So.
Good. All right, anything else for the good of the order?
So, for Rivercom, there's still no agreement with the Employees Guild, so it looks like probably by the end of this month, we'll be in mediation with them, so a little uncertainty there in how that's gonna all work out.
And we are continuing to work with our police union, and I don't know if we're technically in mediation yet or not, but we are, yeah, but that contract laps December thirty-first, so.
I have one question. With the merger of the two law firms, do we have to do an amendment to the contract or a new contract, or what?
Steve said we didn't.
I don't think we do. I, I'm appointed as a city attorney, and so that doesn't change.
Okay. And that doesn't affect our, our other
We reviewed it during December.
I look defenders, and I don't like, because that doesn't get, get us involved in any of that, okay?
I don't think so. We only have one year to go, so I don't, I don't see
You'd think we'd get a reduction in fee, because the prosecutors can now walk to the courthouse as opposed to drive their car, so I'm assuming there'll be a small little fee reduction? I don't know.
It could be, it could go up, because it's really hot.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned.